All right, the September 11th meeting of the Pots Grove School is coming to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so that's done. The secretary will note the role, and he'll note the attendance, and we'll move on. We did have an executive session prior to the meeting tonight, so I'd like to announce that. And now, we will open up to public comment. Are there any pieces of paper, anything? Hands in the air, anything at all? No, okay. Enough with the public comment. We'll now move to presentations and recognition and award. Would you like to take some here, please?
Thank you, Mr. Lingwood. It gives me a great honor and privilege tonight to talk about some of our employees who have chosen to retire from the district. Laurie Ellis, Carol Kuzwansky, Beth Mays Coleman, Renee Okowits, and Teresa Urban. I'd just like to briefly, I think they, all five warrant some conversation. Laurie Ellis has worn many hats since joining the Pots Grove School District in 1997. She has worked as both a student assistant and instructional assistant at West Pots Grove and Lower Pots Grove. She was a library assistant for a period of time, worked in technology, and eventually for the secretary for the curriculum department. Laurie was very artistic and is known throughout the district with her wonderful photos and slide shows. Laurie is looking forward to spending time with her new grandson, who was born this summer. So, we want to congratulate Laurie Ellis for her work. Carol Kuzwansky, Carol joined the Pots Grove School District in 1994 as a substitute secretary. She was hired by the Special Education Department as a part-time secretary. After moving to full-time, she remained in the department until she retired. Carol loves to garden, pick apples from her trees, and bake. She is looking forward to having more time to enjoy those things and spending time with her family. So, congratulations to Carol as well. Beth Mays Coleman, Beth graduated from Bloomsburg University with her teaching degree in the spring of 1981. She joined Pots Grove that summer and has taught here ever since. Beth continues her studies, earning a master's degree from Temple and her doctor from Widener. She has served as the freshman class advisor, graduation project coordinator, maximus advisor, grade level coordinator through the years. She is looking forward to spending time with her husband and enjoying her free time. So, I want to congratulate Dr. Beth Mays Coleman. Turning the page, Renee Okowits is here tonight. Renee was hired in 1986 and worked in the district office in both accounts payable department and the secretary to the curriculum department. In 2009, she transferred to the high school guidance secretary in a position which she has remained until her retirement. Renee is a vivid sports fan and is anxious to spend more time with her grandchildren now that she has retired. Renee, congratulations, please come up.
(inaudible)
Teresa Urban, Teresa joined the Pots Grove in October of 2007 as a support staff substitute.
and wish them well as they go forward. And we hope that the memory of each of these people will live on here in Pots Grove and they'll always be welcomed back because there's just so many generations. All three of my daughters were taught by Dr. Coleman, and she came here a year after
The following school year, she accepted a full-time student assistant position at Ringing
I left, after I graduated.
Rocks and in 2010 moved to the position of secretary to the business administrator
It's just, it's part of the continuity, it's just part of how this works. And to stay here this long, to stay at the district for so many years, says something
at benefit specialist. She remained in that position until retirement. Teresa is looking forward to relaxing, spending time with her family, and traveling to the
really good about Pots Grove.
shore.
The people are willing to come here and stay here, they find a home here, and I can't think of any better compliment to the district.
Moving on with our recognitions, at this time, I would like Matt Alexander to please come
And I would also like to personally thank Mr. Alexander for taking the helm of the board
up.
after kind of a contentious little bit of time, and I think we've stabilized and I
On behalf of the Board of Education and the Pots Grove School District, we want to thank
hope to build on what you've already started. And thank you for your example and for your help and for your service. So, thank you.
We're going to move on to section five, approval of the monthly board actions for
you for five years of service, your leadership and guidance, and we couldn't have moved forward in a lot of directions without you.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
You bet.
August 2nd.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes 5-1, which is August 2nd, 2018, 5-2, August 13, 2018, 5-3, August 14, 2018, and 5-4, which is August 28, 2018.
Second. So, we have a motion and a second, and it's hard to believe we had so many meetings in August. I don't know too many boards that do that. Okay, there we are. So, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the motion? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So, or without objection.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
So, moved. Second. We have a motion and a second for receiving accounts for audit. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So, or without objection.
I move that we approve the payments and invoices in the amount of $770,000 or $722.45 for August 2018 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ashley wins. Does anybody have any questions or comments? No? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
I move that we approve the treasury report for 2018 as presented and file it for audit.
We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right.
Okay, moving forward with the report of the superintendent and our board reps, we look forward to hearing from both, we're hearing from both tonight? Savannah, excellent. Okay, Savannah, you're going to kick it off? Even better, great, decision makers.
Okay, so over the summer this year, the girls' high school basketball team did really well in their summer leagues, and they even won the championship. High school boys soccer also participated in a summer league. The football team attended the same camp that they go to every year, and all high school sports participated in workouts over the summer to prepare for the season. The high school also revised school policy and is now allowing students to carry backpacks during the school day. This year, the marching band performed their first-ever marching band preview for the 2018 season, and the football team has beaten West Catholic 15-14, Methacton 34-0, and Boyer Town 34-8. Since the start of school at the high school, we've had a medical lockdown on the first day of school. We did the weather alert emergency drill, Alice review, and scenario discussion, lock-in and two fire drills, plus, this was as of the other day, so I can't imagine how many more were handed out since, but 11 positive principal referrals for students doing great things and demonstrating the pillars for success. And back-to-school nights, last week, Lower had all of theirs on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and Ringing Rocks is having theirs tomorrow night at 6:30. West is having theirs on Thursday at 6:30. The middle school is having theirs on Wednesday, September 19th at 7:00, and the high school is having theirs on Thursday, September 20th at 7:00.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions for our young directors?
Yeah, I do have one for you girls. I've seen a lot of postings on the principal certificates for positive. Can you explain a little bit about that to us?
It's just when teachers or principals or any staff see students doing good things for other students, like a lot were handed out like the first week, if students heard freshmen asking like, "Oh, where's that class?" Or, "I can't open my locker," or things like that, and teachers saw other students helping them out.
That's really nice. Thank you.
I was just going to say, very good reports, very, very well done, thank you for that. Just because I talk fast doesn't mean you have to. Take your time, okay? We do want to hear what you're saying. So, thanks very much.
I did have actually one question or maybe a challenge for you guys for this coming year. One of the things I'd like to hear from the student representatives is more of the issues that the students are having during the school year brought to the board more, as in like dress code. Whatever the issues are, the students are saying, "Hey, look, we're not seeing this action on something." I'd like to see more of you guys bringing that to us so they can bring it to our attention, okay? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Great, thank you both again. Moving on to number 10 on our agenda, personnel items, and we're going to ask that we start with 10.1, and we're going to ask you to approve the professional staff resignation as submitted.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we clump some of these together for personnel. 10-1, resignations. 10-2, leave of absence. 10-3, appointments. 10-4, change of assignments. 10-5, resignation. 10-6, leave of absence. And 10-7, appointment.
Second. All right, quick question. Does anybody take any exception to any of those? All right, very good. Motion stands. We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions on the motion, 10-1 through 7? No? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So, or.
Okay, moving on to 10.8, supplemental special payment appointments. Our recommendation is that the board approve the supplemental payment appointments as submitted for 2018-19.
So, moved. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a number of questions in reviewing the supplemental special payments. I wonder if we can, unless it's a timing issue, if we can table this perhaps for the personnel committee to review or individual questions to be submitted to the HR department. I'm not ready to vote. The board is ready to move forward. I'll abstain, but I would request that we table this for more time to look at this in more detail.
So, the first question to answer his question is, is this a timing issue? Do, if we don't do it tonight, if we do it at the next board meeting, does that substantively change anything?
I'm going to defer to one of my colleagues because...
I found a friend.
Yeah. Mr. Durenzo, these are fall placements as well. When traditionally do we get that first payment out?
The first half payment usually comes at the end of September, but some of these programs have already, will have started by the next board meeting, so in essence, those advisors would not be permitted to start if there was no action on that. Many of them are all-year supplementals.
Sorry, would you repeat that, please?
Many of them are all-year supplementals. For example, the webmaster and video news, et cetera, they're usually done in the fall.
Right. So, I think what happened was, and you know, this is too much information, can be a bad thing, when we got the sort of supplemental revisions and this was changed from this to that and it went by so many points, some of the changes weren't intuitively obvious to the board members as a whole. And so, the question was, we don't understand what we're approving, really is what it boils down to. It's just, this is going up, and this doesn't seem like it's as big, and this seems different. So, it's a kind of a board education thing. We're not asking you to change, just looking for some better understanding of what's going on. So, we have two options. I don't think he actually made a motion to table. He said he was wondering if he could make a motion to table. The answer to that is yes, but you haven't yet. So, where we are is we have a motion and a second, so we can vote on it right now, or he can make his motion to table and then we'll have a vote on that. All right? So, go ahead.
I know I had the opportunity today to, you know, have an email correspondence with the board regarding the process, and if that's something you're looking at to learn more about, the process and how that, you know, how that chunk of supplemental money gets divided and how that, you know, because there's history too. There's not, there's, as I've learned becoming here, there's a history of how that chunk of money came and how that, how that, those rubrics were set up and the units were set up, and I shared that with the board today and how the role that really the collective bargaining unit has in setting that piece up. They sort of, they monitor that amongst themselves with that. Our role is to make sure that if new clubs come up, and that has come before the board, if new clubs or activities come up, that we try to find ways within that system to start up new activities or clubs, and those who have gone by the wayside in the past, who maybe haven't been filled for a year, two, three, or longer, then we take that particular money and transfer it over to the new and upcoming clubs or activities. So, if that's the process, we'd be happy to do that, and I, you know, I think we could just get a memo out that things are going to be delayed until we have a chance to review. I would only ask the board that if we could do that in the next, like, before the next meeting, so that we could, we could do our piece there beforehand. So, that would be anything I'd ask the board to consider.
So, one, delay any payments if we wait to the next board meeting in two weeks? Is that what I'm hearing?
It would, Mr. Parker.
It would.
It will. And then, some of the, some of the clubs wouldn't start either until that time either.
Can I have a, raise a question? And this is along the line of Mr. Parker's question. If I looked down some of these numbers, what came to me, I'm just pulling off some numbers, not mentioning what they are, $714.24, $595.20. These obviously came from a formula, and I don't know where the formula is or what the metric is, and it would be very helpful in processing this, just to go along with what Bob mentioned earlier, it would be very helpful to process this if I knew what the formula was.
Dr. Nippert, I do believe today, and I sent the formula out this afternoon.
Ouch.
Yeah, that's okay.
I plead guilty.
No, 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 because I want to make sure everybody got it. If you didn't get it and I missed you, then I want to make sure.
Well, no, I didn't miss it, I just didn't check my email.
Yeah, yeah, so I know we, we sent out a couple, we sent out the actual formula and the rubric.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't want to delay any programs from happening. I'm not going to request that we table this. I will abstain. My questions are of a more specific nature that is more appropriate to request in a different setting. I'll do that in the near future.
Sounds good.
I think I'll do the same. I'll abstain as well.
Okay, very good. That means we have a motion and a second. Questions?
I have questions. Okay, so my questions are generally going to be firstly obvious, every one of these programs is actually alive and active and everything like that. So, has every one of these programs already had their sign-ups and such? So, in essence, let's say you have Environmental Club, and let's say Environmental Club's going to start on February, October 1st. If they don't have any people to sign up for Environmental Club, do we still continue to do the supplement, or do we say, "Okay, well, we don't have Environmental Club this year, we're not going to do that supplement"?
That's correct. If people, we will have sign-ups, and if they don't, if they don't sign up, then we wouldn't have the club. I'll just, I'll just confer with principals and Mr. Durenzo and principals. Anybody has part of those pieces? Is that correct?
Yeah, if the supplemental's not, you know, if there is something that, you know, that there wasn't any interest, et cetera, they don't get paid for not doing the supplemental that it didn't take place, but all those supplementals that are on there are all active programs.
Second question's going to be then, you have a lot of supplementals where they have the same person getting paid on multiple times. Are they all different times? I mean, you got acapella, one, choir, this and that, and it's the same person. I know she does, but is she doing the same thing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday with a different group of students? Or, for example, in one, you have Maxima Advisor High School, one person. Maxima Technical Advisor High School, same person. Isn't that the same job?
Not necessarily. I know, I mean, the core question is, is like a specific, specific to that, to the choir. So, so there's, it's a specific skill set that's taught, and it's a separate piece. It just happens that that's the person of expertise and that's the supplemental.
But they meet at different times?
Yes.
Okay.
It might be, it might, it might be three to four, four to five, five to six. Yeah, it might be the same day.
Part B to that, to Al's question, if I can. So, this is, these clubs, the supplemental pay is for full-time employees that have worked a full-time day that are putting in additional hours before or after school.
Correct. Yes.
So, I sort of piggyback off a bill. So, I'm just curious, you know, we're talking about before and after-school type stuff. Is there any oversight with some of these clubs? Because I know of one, I'm not going to say any, give any details about it, but I know of one in particular, that the advisor had refused to meet after school and instead chose to met during school, still continued to get paid quite a bit, and it's my understanding that that club might not even be, be up and running anymore. So, I'm just curious about the, the level of oversight on some of this because this is, you know, technically it's for the kids? You know, not, I mean, it's great that the teachers and the advisors get paid for it, but if it's not being run properly by the advisor that's being paid to do it, then the kids aren't benefiting. So, I just don't know what kind of oversight there is, what kind of, you know, and I know it's a lot of clubs and it's a lot of people to keep track of, but I'm just curious, is there any checkups and...
Yeah, I mean, the clubs, the clubs are building, the clubs are activities, I mean, obviously, the sporting pieces come under the athletic department. You know, Mr. Durenzo, obviously, specifically will be part of that co-curricular oversight now, but it's building, it has been building specific, so the building administrator or administrators in that particular building have oversight for those activities. Now, I, and I, I say this, Mrs. Custer, because, you know, those are pieces that, that obviously are frowned upon, you know, and we're not interested in supporting that type of behavior. So, if we, if we know something, then we need, you know, we need to act on it, we will act on it. So, obviously, that is disturbing if that's, that's true, and I know any administrator in the building that supervises the extra pieces, because they all know how important the extracurricular component. In fact, the board supported us with more money this year to support those connections with kids. So, we're not, we're not messing around with that piece because it's a vital piece of our culture. So, any support that you can give us as far as helping us with that, but our building administrators, co-curricular, and athletic director are the three people, it would be oversight.
And then, I have one last question. I didn't want to break out individually, everybody, but there are two I just want a little bit more clarification on. What does the faculty manager of the high school do for six grand? And obviously, I know what they do, but why do we have to have a detention monitor club or pay for another 1,800?
I'm going to defer to some of my experts in the audience. Dr. Ziegler, how about as far as the detention piece? Can you add any light to that, that position?
Yeah, that's a high school detention after school, basically, to have a teacher stay after school. That's what that's for.
Dr. Ziegler, is that for the whole year? Is that for the...
That is for the entire year, yes. And the faculty managers, like the game manager, he oversees like washing of all the uniforms and equipment and everything, preparing everything, getting it all ready also.
For sports?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and a list of questions that have been answered, so that's very good. You know, I just wonder why Evan Brant isn't here tonight, because he makes a comment about how we blast through our meetings with very little discussion, so.
He's in Davisville.
Oh, is he? All right, well, he's missing the fun. So, there we are. We have a motion and a second. Don't be greedy. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So, or without objection. Abstain? Two abstentions.
So, we have 6-2, Bill?
6-2.
Okay, moving on to 10-9, supplemental revisions. We asked, our recommendation is to approve the supplemental revisions as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the revisions? Kind of bundled into the previous motion. Okay, no questions or comments, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you very much.
We are asking the board to approve the miscellaneous salaries as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on this or any comments?
Not a question or a comment, but I'm going to abstain from this one.
All right. Okay, there being no questions or comments, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. And one abstention for the record, thank you.
Moving on to action items regarding business, the Brandywine Virtual Academy.
I'd like to make a motion under business that we approve 11.1, Brandywine Virtual Academy, and 11.2, social centennial agreement.
I'd like you to, can we ask the questions of two? That way, we can still keep it together.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next section, 10.10 miscellaneous employee salaries. We are asking the board to approve the miscellaneous salaries as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on, on this or any comments?
Not a, not a question or a comment, but I'm going to abstain from this one.
Okay, there being no questions or comments, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. And one abstention for the record. Thank you.
Moving on to action items regarding business, the Brandywine Virtual Academy.
I'd like to make a motion under business that we approve 11.1 Brandywine Virtual Academy and 11.2 Social Sentinel Agreement.
I'd like you to, can we ask the questions of two? That way we can still keep it together.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments?
Okay, I have one. Social Sentinel, we've talked about this a little bit. I am interested in pursuing this for one year on a trial basis. I want to see how it works. I want to see if it's successful. I want to see if it's more ti, more, more time consuming and less return. I don't want to, I don't want to just turn it down out of hand, but I'm, I'm not going to say that I'm in on this forever and ever. But we'll try it for one year in the trial basis and see what sort of success we have. So that's it.
So do we need to change because?
No.
And here it says agree for three years.
Oh, it says three years.
Mr. Nestor, the agreement, I think, allows us to opt out. I remember reading that in a timely fashion. If I remember correctly.
What I'm reading is that we have the ability to terminate for convenience 30 days prior to the annual renewal period by providing written notice. So that's what I was.
So we will prove this for three years, but we have an option to cancel the contract within 30 days.
30 days before.
Can we put this on some sort of calendar so we don't forget to bring it back up in a year?
Mr. Parker? Yeah, we, Mrs. Bicker does a really good job of keeping, keeping this on track. So I'm sure she heard what you just said right there. It's probably.
It's already in the notes.
It's probably already, already in that book. And we'll do that once, once we get the contract. Maybe it'll be October 5th. I'm not sure exactly, but yeah, correct.
And then the only other thing I have was, do we have some of the answers to the questions that came up at the last board? Like we had down with the, was it?
Specifically, I had asked if you'll recall, first of all, if the keywords in the main database would be publicly released. You shaking your head, Mr. President? Does that mean uniformly no?
I was under the understanding that that is obviously proprietary, so they don't want to give anybody an idea of what those words are. So they can, you know, key in if they wanted to prank you or whatever. And I'm, I also imagine that that database would be updated on a routine basis. So releasing it one time wouldn't necessarily help or be of worth. And by the way, I think it would be generally a bad practice to release that, that information. I'm all for releasing public information, especially about those of us who choose to be out here in front of the public, but something we're using to enhance security. For example, I would not, I would never release the work hours of our security team, where they work, where they're post, where they're, where they're going from here to there. I see this as an extension of that. It's how we do our security, a part of our security.
It would be for me to argue with you, and it's not my intent.
Well, you're just reminding us of your questions because we're not at public comment yet.
I would suggest that since we're using this to do public monitoring, that in fact, the public would benefit from knowing what is being monitored on and for. And I disagree with you, sir, but other than that. I had also asked if the district was going to be able to add its own keywords to the database.
We have yet to meet with Social Sentinel because we have not gotten board approval yet. So we're, we're waiting, we're waiting for this contract to be approved and then have our initial meetings with Social Sentinel.
Did I misunderstand that during the last meeting, we were going to meet with the representative of Social Sentinel, get the answers, and then come back to the board with them?
Yeah, I, I think that we, we gave the board an opportunity to, to ask questions if they wanted to. If they had anything for, for me to, to ask that group, and we just, we didn't, we chose not to do that. Yeah.
I had asked if the database or Social Sentinel would be used by the district for reputation management?
No, we're, this, this is something that we are considering using as a security measure only.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, Social Sentinel's experts, advisors have pointed out to the company that some of the language used by minority students might in fact trigger more alarms regarding them in social media than others. Have we investigated that at all? Does that pose a problem for the district?
Well, here's, here's what I'm going to say about that. First of all, I have no information other than you're, you're bringing this question to us here at this time, and I appreciate that. And we, we always want any ideas or thoughts that the public has. We did have a public comment session at the beginning where we could have taken this as a matter of regular order and talked about it then. I don't know. I have not studied Social Sentinel. I thought I said pretty clearly, we're taking this on a trial basis. If we do see problems with it, we're going to get rid of it. Okay? Nobody here is interested in targeting, hurting, offending anybody. And if that's the effect that this program has, then we'll drop it. We're here to try and do something good and protect our students and protect our community. And yeah, there's going to be a bunch of people that can poke holes in it, say there's this and that, and the other thing that you could have done better. And, you know, God bless them. We'll take their comments and we will take their, take their votes should they care to run.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Quick comment. I've been silent about this because I think you're going in the right direction for reputation management and for doing things. But more concern for me is not the emotionally disturbed person who's going to put hateful speech on Facebook. The real concern that I have is the really almost terroristic person who's going to go on the dark web and buy bombs. And this isn't going to cover that. Now, I don't think we should panic and rush out and become paranoid about this. But I think this is a step in the right direction of monitoring what's going on to protect ourselves. And this is kind of like I have a burglar alarm on my house. I don't want it to go off, but I have it there anyway, and this is the first step. And if we need to look and monitor dark web, then we can, we can expand either this or somebody else who will do that kind of protection for us. So that's my comment. I support this, but I like your idea. If this doesn't work out, because this is a risky sort of thing, we can, we can get out. I think that's important, too.
Our first line of defense is our community, our staff, our teachers, our bus drivers, neighbors, other children, teachers. That's our first line of defense. We should know what's going on in our community with our children, and we should be paying attention. And this is simply a backup, a far back backup for things that have slipped through the cracks. We don't want to let anything slip through the cracks. This is one more part of the safety net. So that's how I see this, and that's why it's only worth $2,000 to me.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page.
Can I just clarify a couple, a couple of things to that comment? This has nothing to do with reputation management whatsoever. So anybody speak up, but I believe it's a board stance, I just want to be clear for the media, that this has nothing to do with reputation management. And I forget my second point. So. Oh, and regards to risk, I, I don't see any quote "risk" that this has to the district. So if there is any known risk, if the administration would let us know. But I'm voting yes because I see no risk. I see it as a backup to a backup type thing. And if it's another step we can take, then that's what we need to do.
All opposed, say no.
Moving on to action items, number 12. We ask that the board approve the conference attendance for 12.1 as submitted.
I make a motion to combine 12.1 to 12.4. There's no objection.
Motion and a second to line 12-1 to 12-4. Does anybody have any questions on those items? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Okay, moving on to some action items for miscellaneous. We're asking the board tonight to approve 13.1, our SRO contract as submitted.
We have a motion and a second on the search resource, uh, resource officer. Are there any questions or comments on the contract?
Yes, I had one. As we said before, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to say I have any expertise in contracts and such. But there was in a particular item that I wanted to include it in the contract, as in not finding a way that the public was not going to be given all the details of every arrest and every incident that happened in our school. And you were going to go back to the individuals that wanted it in the contract. And what, what came about, about that?
I don't, I don't even know, and I, I'll ask Dr. Arnie, but I don't think that was discussed.
To be perfectly honest with you, you did bring that up. We didn't bring it up in our meeting. It's not in the contract, but by practice, it's a practice that we want to avoid. And I agree with you. We did not talk about that, and it needs to be talked about.
Then, then I'm going to vote no.
So I, I understand, I understand that. So that was, that was a missed piece, but it was never part of these contracts.
Thank you, Dr. Arnie. I, I appreciate that. And one of the questions I have for Mr. Davis will be, and, and Mr. Lee, just, I, you can speak for the board and all of us regarding what happened and why you want to do that. Well.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah. No, this is about the contract. No, the contract is, my, my.
But what I brought up was.
Yeah.
It wasn't published.
The con, the contract is, if, if we stipulate, one of the concerns for, for the district and for the, for the board was the township releasing names of our students.
That's not discussed in the contract.
It's not. Can that, can that be?
So we could do one of a couple of things. You could either go back to the municipalities and.
Ask them to amend the contract, or we could pass it tonight, if it's the board's will, with the understanding that it'll be added or supplemented by a side letter or some arrangement where the board's concern is addressed. That's up to you what you want to do. You know, there is some mild time urgency because we're technically over the, the deadline. It's a two-year deadline. I think Bill and I talked about it the other day. We're a couple of months into the, the new year. So.
I can pledge that. I'll, I'll make that phone call first thing tomorrow. I, I will get those answers first thing tomorrow.
So why don't we, why don't we?
We'll start that conversation.
Why don't we go ahead and approve it with the understanding there has to be a clarification on that issue? Whether it be by a side letter, a memo between Dr. Arnie and the department, where we actually amend the agreement.
And it wasn't just the names of the students, which were never released. It was the fact that anything was released. Three incidences, this person was arrested. There was five arrests. And I want none of it in there.
Why is not none of it in there, may I ask?
I will answer. All right. The reason why I don't feel that it's something that is necessary to the public is it, it does not protect the students' rights, in my opinion, of what goes on in the school. The school is for the students to learn and be organized in a way. If something happens, it's not just general public knowledge. We're going to say, oh, well, we had three drug arrests, or we had three violent arrests, or we had this. I don't believe that's something that every district involves the police station with. So I disagree with releasing the information on every little arrest to the public. If it is a violent arrest, I'd have no problem with that, but not every single arrest. But so I want it worded that where personal information stays in-house, what happens with the children who are juveniles and under 18 stays in-house.
And how do you respond, if I may, to the parents of other children who feel like their families are affected negatively or otherwise by what happened at the school? And who willingly, on social media and elsewhere, say, I'm glad I know about that, and somebody from the district should have told me earlier. And remind, we've gone around about this for now two and a half years with Dr. Shirk's predecessor and others.
Can I, can I, my concern with it is that sometimes, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the media has gotten better with this. But there's been times historically where a headline or story was completely misleading. Not pointing any fingers, not saying anybody in this room. So as an example, something might say, well, a student was arrested for bringing a weapon to school. Well, may, I'm not saying this is what, I don't recall specifics, but maybe it was a nail clipper. Was that the specific one? Okay, that's what was my. That, that, that's my concern, that the full story isn't said, and then it causes an undue, I don't want to say panic, but rash of concern, which wouldn't have been there if there wasn't a misleading story put out. District does an excellent job in notifying parents when there's a need to do that, an excellent job. They go above and beyond with that. That said, I don't think when then a rest is made, I, it seems to me that, but I'm not the expert here. It seems to me that's public information. So if the media requests, how many arrests were made here, there, or wherever, then they have the right to that information. But perhaps I'm wrong.
I really don't like doing this, Al, but I'm going to this one time. I understand your sentiment, and I agree with your sentiment 100%. We would like to, and there's, and this is where there can be a, a different perceptions of the same thing. It can seem like what you're saying is meant to hide things, which is meant to keep people from knowing what's going on. I believe that your sentiment is that we don't want, we don't want an unfair, bad reputation because one of our districts is, one of our departments is choosing to release this information, and other people don't. So all these things happen in the paper, and you see posco, posco, posco. We don't see any of the other school districts. I understand that. I would say we have chosen to put a paid police officer in our buildings to have an immediate response capability. And when he's doing his job, he's doing his job, and that job is for the township. And, and if they ask for it and he reports it, that's that. We have been protected. We've had, we've had this officer respond and take care of the problem, control it and stop it. I have to see that as a good thing. And so while I would rather everybody got reported on or nobody got reported on, that's my preference. We've taken the decision, and there's a consequence that goes with that, and that is that one of the districts is choosing to release that information. And that's their right. That's my opinion. Just mine. The only counterpoint I would say to that is, to me, he's not doing the job for the police department. We're hiring him, we're paying him. He's our security. He's not. I know, I know technically, no, he's not. I know technically he's not. But if I'm the one paying him, obviously it's out of tax dollars and blah, 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 right? To me, it is not something that should be reported. But if everybody else feels it should be, fine and dandy. I have no problem voting no.
Can I bring up another issue from the contract?
As long as it agrees with me. Sorry, go ahead.
I, I want to change topics, but stick to the contract, if that's okay, if nobody else is. I do have one problem with the contract, and I have one concern. My one problem is in paragraph number nine, that the last sentence, SRO could be reassigned to another position if the principal and superintendent have problems with his or her performance or whatever reason is uncomfortable with that person being in the building. I'm presuming this was a point of discussion, but I think we need to have the ability to say, we're not happy with this person in the building. We don't want him or her here. That's my number one problem. Any thoughts or comments on that from the administration or others? So I guess I'm requiring, I'm asking if, can we change that word "could" to "will"? That SRO will be reassigned, removed from the building at the superintendent's request. Page, page eight, top line.
I'm trying to figure two seconds to try to do this now, but it may not be the best environment. But I do believe there is a section here where we do have more of a.
While you're looking at that, unless you have a comment. While you're looking at that, unless you have a con...
No. Mr. Parker, we have exercised that piece in the...
This is the contract.
Well, we have exercised that piece regarding the performance or mix, if you will, or how it would blend, the fit, if you will. The fit. Yeah, we've done that on several occasions in my tenure here, you know, with the chief and the building principal and...
Right. Then I'd like this contract to reflect that. So if that's our practice and that's what's happening, then the contract should reflect that and say, not could be reassigned, but will be reassigned at the superintendent's request, or the board's request, whatever the wording needs to be. While Dr. Arnie is looking for that, I have another, not as strong, but another ongoing concern with the SROs in the building. We have some students that are emotional support and unfortunately at times need to, need some physical intervention to help them gain control for the safety of themselves or others. Our staff, well, the district does an excellent job in training our staff in a very specific technique, CPI, which is very different from the techniques that local police use. Okay? My concern is if an officer is in the vicinity of a student who's having some challenges and needs intervention, or let me specify, an emotional support student, who it's written into the IEP that these type of things might be needed and expected, and we have trained staff there to do it, if the officer, the SRO isn't trained in the same technique, there's going to be some challenges because I'm presuming that he's, he or she's going to have some expect, you know, personal expectation, like, look, this kid's flipping out, I need to step in. So I guess I would request that some discussion be made around that point, perhaps having the SRO trained in CPI, if he or she feels that he needs to then intervene. He's following the lead of, you know, our crisis team, if it's an emotional support student. That's my concern.
Appreciate your thoughts, Mr. Parker. I know, as you mentioned, you know, when those things occur, we do have those crisis team interventions. I mean, they swarm those areas, obviously, and the people who are trained, which is most of our, that's, that team, would take, would take over specifically. I can't answer your question, and I don't want to put Dr. Ziegler on the spot as far as, is our SRO trained in CPI? But I, but I think it's, I think it's something professional development-wise, we could, we could definitely share, and I would think both the chiefs that we work with, I'm sure that they would be favorable to that type of intervention strategies.
I won't vote no in this contract for that reason, but I would request that that conversation happen and we hear back, not just the high school, but, well, I guess that's where the SRO is, but you know, especially if they, you know, if they ever go to the elementary, I guess they visit the elementary sometimes where you see more of that happening. But if that discussion can happen and we can plan, be proactive in that regard, because like I said, we have a team, they go, but if an officer's there, you know, there could be some obligation felt by the officer to intervene. So if we could look into that more. I will vote no, however, unless we found something based on the fact that I don't see in this contract, from quickly reviewing it, that we have the ability to, as we have in the past, to ask for a removal of an SRO officer, unless there's other wording that contradicts paragraph nine.
All right. Very good. So it sounds like two noes to begin with. I just want to close the loop because we had some discussion, and I want to make sure the motion is, and the second is, that we approve the contract as presented. No modifications, no, you know, get back to us later. Approve it as is. Okay? He's asked that you do look for that language, but he's willing to vote no because he can't find it right now.
And I do not believe it is.
Okay.
The language I was assuming.
So we have that. But this language is substantively the same as we've had in past years, and we have been able to exercise it, so I'm comfortable with the language as is. So that's where we are. So now we're going to ask, does anybody else have any other questions? And then we'll go back to, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
We have two noes. Thank you, everyone.
Sorry.
Al Leach.
Okay, moving on to Section 14, Joint Operating Committee and Reports. We're going to turn it to Mrs. Grimm.
All right. On a good note, we had an excellent meeting last night, and again, I cannot, I have to begin and thank Ashley and Bob for all their support. At the Western Center yesterday, we started off our meeting, good is great, but we're going to get better. This morning, the students hosted a memorial service for 9/11. Local EMTs, fire, and police were there, and they were on ABC News tonight. There was a clip on them, so I came in like, oh my gosh, it's the Western Center kids out there. So great honor for those kids. Startup of the school, everybody was excited, the staff and the students were back in the building. Students are really working hard on their safety certifications now and getting really active in the shops starting this, starting this week. We will be having our first Boy Scout Merit Badge College on October 20th from 8:00 to 2:00 at the school, and this is hosting the Regional Boy Scout Merit Badge College, and they will be offering 17 different merit badges to the scouts. Girls Night Out will be November the 8th. This is our third annual Girls Night Out, and basically this is a way to get girls into trades, to introduce them. And like I said, it's been a success, so that'll be November the 8th. Open House will be December 5th. We will be hosting this annual event again in December for prospective students. Our online application window opens October 1st, 2018. The Western Center has reached an agreement with the Montgomery County Community College where students in certain classes can earn up to 25 college credits, combining their NOCTI scores, industrial certifications earned, SOAR scores, and dual enrollment credits. Our new principal, Mr. Chomnisky, is in the process of ironing out all the details about the dual enrollment classes being offered at the Western Center. Basically, we're giving all these kids more opportunities. Last week, we received a donation of a forklift, which will now be able to offer another industry credential to students with carpentry, electrical, HVAC, and metal tech. They all are going to be approved on the PDE certifications, and which are now offered to our students, and it also helps with safety certifications for the students. Mr. Mortson finalized the delivery of two pieces of machinery for our Diesel Tech program from H&amp;K. We will be receiving a donation of a triaxle as well as a backhoe. Enrollment, after the first two weeks of enrollment, everything, like the last time I reported, kind of settled down. You know, kids not sure if they wanted to go or they wanted to go. So our total, our totals are 552 students that are enrolled, 149 are from Pots Grove, 222 are from Springfield, and 182 is from Upper Perk. So please check out everything on the website. They have a lot going on, and we will not have a meeting in October, but we will be having our meeting in November, and you have to check on the website again for our first community dinner. So there you go.
Quick question, Patty. That enrollment for Pots Grove, is that an increase from last year?
Yes.
A decrease? How much is the increase, and what's the trend been?
Thank you, Mrs. Grimm. I'd like to move on to Curriculum Integration Technology Committee for their report.
That would be me. All right, we had our meeting on August 28th. It was a, an abbreviated meeting. We only had an hour. So we went over three things, data review, health curriculum, and world language update. With the data review, we just really skimmed over that because not all the data is in yet. So what, what we did is, the information was presented to us in all, on all three subjects, and we were going to come back to it all in our October meeting, but we just wanted to sort of get our feet wet with what they were presenting to us in August. So anyway, the data review, we will dig deeper into when we meet again in October and have more numbers. For the, the next thing we did was the world language update, and we had, the world language department was there, and they gave us some recommendations on the possibility of adding a third language, possibly maybe starting a brief introduction to a foreign language, starting in kindergarten. They gave us quite a few possibilities to look at and to consider, and so we will revisit all of that again with a little more in-depth, a lot more in-depth in October. Then last but not least was the health curriculum update. Our teachers worked over the summer to update the health curriculum. They used quite a few different resources, CDC, World Health Organization, I believe, to basically write our own curriculum that will be used in conjunction with the book. And again, we just skimmed over the surface, and we're going to dig a little deeper in October. So that's it.
One quick question in regards to, I don't know if Mr., if Dave was informed or given, do we have the true costs of what it's going to cost, obviously, to do the third world language if we did the K through five section instead of just the exploratory? Because that was obviously going to be staging over the year. Do we have the actual true costs over the years?
Cost information for the number of teachers involved for various scenarios. So that was shared with Dr. Radiger and the teachers.
The one, the scenario was just for K, I feel. We didn't do a K, we didn't do a K five because we really felt that, that was a, that, that vision, if you will, was outside the box, and I think what, what we didn't want to do administratively was, we didn't want to have, we wanted the teachers to present the case to the board and the committee, which they did. And I think obviously the, the common sense piece to that is when you get down the road and keep piling, you know, you keep adding a teacher, you know, it's going to be a quite expensive endeavor, and that probably at the end of the day wouldn't be the final recommendation, whereas the recommendations really are the scenarios that we, we had was basically, you know, leave it the same as we have it. The second scenario was to add exploratory with the two languages we have, and then of course, the third one was adding the third language and exploratory. So I think we're sort of, we're sort of funding it based on the correspondence that I, that I've had. And then the fourth scenario was to add the K piece in, but we did not, we did not take it any further than the K piece, if that was your question, Mr. Leach.
The reason why you said about the correspondence and stuff, I was, I happened to be at that particular meeting, although I'm not on the curriculum committee, and the sentiment was, from my understanding when I was there, was that was something that was very intriguing to do, something and something the community would actually be more behind in paying more. So that's what I thought the initial question was when we discussed it was, well, if we wouldn't even consider it, what would the true cost be played out? Obviously, if we come back and it's going to be $10 million, no, of course not, it's never going to be that much, but that's what I thought we were at, not, well, we just, we just threw that out there just as an out of the box, but we really weren't going to consider it anyway. So maybe I misunderstood the meeting.
No, I don't think you did. I think the point that I just wanted to share with the board was, that, that came as a, that was a grassroots
Right.
effort by our, that, that wasn't something, that was, that wasn't something that, that the administration came up with. That was from the teachers. And, you know, when we started looking at the numbers, that was a very expensive proposition. So I've been around this board long enough to know about fiscal responsibility, and so I wanted to take it to one step, which was the, was the kindergarten piece, if there's, if there's more interest. And I wanted to ask the board, I thought I sent that, the Rubik piece out to everybody regarding the scenarios. I'd sent it out to the CT Committee and the board. I made sure, yeah, I made sure that everybody got that, because not everybody was part of that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everybody got that. So I, I think that, you know, I think we've discussed it. I know we discussed those pieces in the last couple of weeks, and then we'll look at it, we'll look at it again in October, but if anybody has any more further questions about that piece specifically, any different from the scenarios that we presented, just let us know, and we'll, we'll get you the information that you need. Okay, moving on to athletics, co-curriculum, community relations. The report, please.
Well, the athletic co-curricular community relations meeting was held on August 28th, 2018. Mr. Ansbach summarized the transition throughout the athletic department for the past month, specifically the launching of the Schedule Star slash Big Teams Online Scheduling Resource. Basically, this is a program where all of our teams in the pack are, have all their schedules. So it's just one program, and you have your schedules there. They can upload Twitter with the results, pictures, and it's, it was nice to see that they put the time and the effort into it to kind of think of all the teams together. So he did report on that. He also reported that we have for our fall, we have 232 fall athletes, and the middle school numbers are not yet final. Mr. Ansbach reported that 133 families attended the first of two athletic meetings, and the first one was held Thursday, August the 16th, and the second one was to be held tonight. He also reported and updated, and we discussed how, how he discussed the new eligibility and requirements, how they were introduced to the student athletes and their parents this fall. All parents receive the information at the parents' meeting, and each team was met with, individually by Mr. Ansbach prior to the season. Mr. Ansbach and Mr. Dorenzo will continue to develop the process for introducing these eligibility standards in all co-curricular programs as pilot programs beginning this November. Mr. Dorenzo's provided the committee with a copy of the goals and objectives for the Office of the Community Relations for the upcoming year and beyond. Balances were provided for the Market Street and Educational Foundation Funds for a review by the committee. Mr. Dorenzo also communicated to the committee that the foundation will be awarding five mini-grants this fall to help revitalize the foundation and bring additional awareness to the mission. Yeah, Mr. Dorenzo responded to an inquiry from Mr. Leach about reconfiguring the board of the foundation. That process is being reviewed at this time. Current members will have the opportunity to remain on the board before invitations were extended to new members. So basically, they're just going to reorganize the foundation, and they're going to launch it off by giving five mini-grants this fall, which was really nice to hear. Mr. Dorenzo reviewed the concept of adding additional co-curricular programs in grades three through eight with the support of the board's additional $25,000 added to the budget this year. And if you remember, we all discussed that that's the area of the age where we feel we're losing kids, and we need to get more proactive in activities for them. So Mr. Dorenzo was very happy with that. Mr. Leach brought up the subject of branding and what was the timeline for choosing a logo. I think the goal there is we want to have one Falcon logo, Pots Grove logo, that's going to go everywhere from kindergarten to all athletics to high school to administration, and the parrot might get lost. Yeah. So, but that's very important, that we have one logo for everything. And then I inquired using our newly formed color guard at the Western Center for some of our events. It's something new they started last spring, and I'm always trying to, you know, bring our kids back here, so it was an excellent meeting.
I'm sorry, I had a lot of questions about different things today.
Go ahead.
First, I want to say thank you very much for incorporating the community relations part. I know that before I had asked about that, and that was a no-go, but I'm glad to see that's there. The other thing, though, is I would like to know if it's possible for consideration to add one meeting in June. We always have the least amount of meetings in that group, especially now that we've had the community piece. Our last meeting is in April. It doesn't, it's really like the beginning to like the middle of when athletics actually starts, and it kicks, you know, goes all the way through. I'd love to know if possible, we could schedule one in June so we can actually have the, everything completed for the whole year, sort of finalize everything, set it up for the next year, rather than having that big gap between April and September. sort of finalize everything, set it up for the next year, rather than having that big gap between April and September.
We can, we can definitely, in fact, we did, we had four.
Four with the five.
Uh, but we can definitely do like a recap in June. Would probably be more like second, would be after the fact unfortunately, just because we're packed.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But yeah, we could definitely squeeze that and we'll put that on our, our list.
I guarantee for one more meeting. You're stuck with us for one more.
Any other, uh, questions, comments? Moving on to, uh, new business. Mr. Lindgren, do you mind if I start?
Please.
Okay. Couple of things on the new business side I, I'd like to share with the board. And, and they, they sort of fit with our, our, our pledge with Social Sentinel. I don't know if you had an opportunity to, to take a look at this. This has been in our news and probably in some of your board updates regarding, um, uh, from PSBA. But pursuant to Act 44, the Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General is establishing a Safe to Say, Something School Safety Anonymous Tip Program. So, um, Dr. Harney is, is going to be our, our representative to monitor that piece. But that'll be another way for our students and our community to give tips regarding any type of school safety concerns that they might have. And that'll, that'll kick off, um, that'll kick off in January, January 14th of 2019. So that'll be another way for our community to, to have an outreach, if you will, uh, to, uh, to say something. Safe to Say it's called, S A F E two, letter two, or number two, to say. So I wanted to share that with the board because I think that, that piece is important as well. Another piece that I thought is interesting is it's really, it's a, it's a point of pride for us, uh, is that we've been talking about the trauma-informed student really since the fall of 16. And, uh, we were fortunate enough to, to have our trauma-informed training, uh, before, during the end of school and now once again this fall with our staff. And it was, it just came, um, came over the wire, uh, from, uh, PSBA as well, that a new proposal, trauma-informed care could become a standard in PA schools. So, looks like it could be one of those next, uh, unsupported mandates. But I, I'm happy to say that we have, we have taken that initiative upfront and positioned ourselves to really, uh, take a look at this type of student and how we manage them. So I, I thought, you know, again, that was really a, a point of pride. The trauma-informed?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. The, the trauma-informed, uh, uh, student, um, and it's, um, trying to think how I'd best describe it in a, in a, in a simplest way. Our students come to, to school today with a lot of, um, baggage and, and we, the, the trauma-informed people call it an invisible backpack. You think there's books, you think there's pencils, there's rulers, erasers, there's not. There's, there's, uh, there's violence, there's domestic violence, there's divorce, there's suicide. Uh, there could even be murder. It's, it's the things that, that if you took the trauma-informed test, we would probably be one maybe of, of, you know, maybe we all score zero or one, a divorce in our family or some type of traumatic event. But what they found out is this, this, these events that happen to children actually biologically affect how they behave in school. And so what we're trying to do is better inform our teachers, uh, of the students that are in front of them. And, and, and instead of, you know, study asking like, why are you doing that? Why are you acting out? Like, what's wrong? You just, you just changed it. Why, why did you, why do you act in that way? And it's just, it's a whole, uh, way to communicate with our students. And it's also gives our students, uh, our teachers a better way of communicating with those particular students and better, better understanding those, those students that they, that are in front of them. So, um, I think that, that, those pieces will also, and the tools that they give us will help us manage student behavior better for those types of children. So, um, that's, that's the trauma-informed. Thanks, Bob. Yeah. So, from there, I'm going to, uh, I'm just going to switch gears for one second and I'm going to ask Dave Nestor to, to pipe in some good news from, uh, our building project.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Uh, as, as those of you who are on the board for a while know, we qualify, or we, we obtained in a $2 million grant, uh, as part of the high school construction project. It was called an ACE grant through the D C E D. And one of the major, the major component of the grant is that, uh, we attain LEED Gold status uh, for the high school project. This is a LEED Gold, LEED is a program geared towards, uh, energy efficiency and, um, uh, sustainability, uh, things like that for, for the building. And there are various levels. There's, uh, there's silver, gold, and there is a platinum. But for, for us to retain this $2 million grant, we had to attain LEED Gold status. I'm happy to announce that last Thursday, I received notification that we did in fact get the LEED Gold status award. We, uh, we needed to score a 60, uh, point, uh, amount on it and we, uh, came in much higher than I actually thought. We had a bigger buffer than we thought. Uh, we came in with a 65. So we were actually well on our way to the, uh, the next level, but, uh, I'm just happy we got the gold. So, um, we're currently in the process of, uh, arranging for all the awards to show up and we'll have a, uh, a reception at, uh, at some point later when we have, uh, everything organized. So, thanks, Dr. Shirk.
Thank you, Mr. Nestor. Appreciate it, Dave. Absolutely.
Um, that's excellent, Dave. Um, I remembered that we had to put some investment into it to get, get to that point. Is that right? Remember we had to?
Yeah, the vast majority of the, uh, components of the, the program, the sustainability concepts were things that we were looking to, to do anyway. But, uh, there were some energy efficiency items. We put a solar, solar array on the roof. We did, did some other things. But, uh, in order to attain this, this goal is, uh, uh, Mr. Lindgren said earlier, uh, we had to monitor how much of our building materials came from the local community. Uh, we had to document how much of our, uh, construction waste was being recycled. Uh, we had to have so many, uh, uh, high occupancy vehicle, uh, parking places and so many electric vehicle parking places. Uh, the, 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 the components of this grant are head fingers into everything, uh, with it. So there's a great deal of documentation, a great deal of record keeping, um, and, uh, some arm wrestling with the contractors to make sure we got the information, uh, just a little bit of that. And, uh, but, uh, you know, ultimately, uh, it's come to fruition. So, uh, very proud to, to say we'll have a LEED Gold program here.
Well, congratulations. I knew that was a big, big step and a big chance we took. And, um, congratulations. That's awesome news.
Thank you again. Uh, I just wanted to also share, I had the opportunity to, to be at the Western Center, uh, today for the nine 11 ceremony. And, uh, our kids represented us very, very well. They represented the day very well. And I think the thing about it is that, you know, you, you always reflect on, on, on times like that. And, you know, one of the things that was, was brought up by Mr. Mortensen was, you remember, he didn't say, do you remember? He says, you remember where you were when you heard that, you know, the towers were hit that morning? And I'm like, absolutely I do. I mean, I, I, I reflected back in, you know, so quickly to where I was and what I was thinking, what I did. And it sort of kicked it off for everybody, you know? And, uh, with, you know, with the moment of silence, the flag, the ceremony with the color guard, and then the representation with all the first responders, military was there as well, uh, and the, and the local police. So, yeah, I just wanted to share that with the, with the board that it would, uh, that we were well represented. Uh, it was a very, a very prestigious event, if you will. Channel six was there and, um, I just wanted to let you know that that clip is on the website. We had a chance. We, we, I spoke with Chris this afternoon. He had opportunity to share that with me. So you can, you can take a look at that, that ceremony. Six ABC was there to help us out. So, um, feel free to share that. But I just wanted to report that it was a, it was a very, very well represented piece for us. So, our kids did a great job. And finally, for me, and I'll, I'll pass, pass the mic, is that, um, I have dates for our calendar committee. Uh, it was a, um, a request from the board last year when we did our district calendar, that, uh, the board and I wanted to have input as well as the community factions that support that. So, we took a look at our calendar and we're looking at two dates. We want to, we want to have the ability to, to meet in October and November if necessary. Because one of the things that I'd like to do is be able to share with the board and our community, uh, members, PTAs, et cetera, that I want to be able to show them, if you will, that some of the parameters that we have to take to build this calendar. And, and I hate to say it, sometimes we're like handcuffed to, to what we can do and what we can't do. So, um, but I want to, I want to take time. I'm looking really at Thursday, October 11th. And I would really like, I, you know, I'm going to, I guess I'll put you on the spot. You don't have to say anything. But I would like, like five board members. I think we need the representation there to be able to really reflect on that. And I'll, I, I think, Mrs. Becker, we're looking at seven o'clock for that, uh, that time period. And then what we'll do is we'll get the information, uh, out to, um, the support groups of the district that, that really support the calendar and use our calendar, uh, for that, for that piece. And then, um, uh, possibly having a follow-up on the 22nd. But I like to shoot for, for, uh, October 11th. That gives us one month to get the word out and the information out for our, for our calendar, calendar committee. For the 1920 school year, we're going to be talking about a little bit of futuristic stuff. So, um, you'll hear more from us.
Okay.
Okay? We'll prob, we'll do it at the district office. Yeah. Yes, correct. Yeah. Okay.
A minimal five or?
The more the merrier. But I think five would, would be a good rep, you know, half the board would be a good, good place for us to be at. So.
Here I go. Seems like we have a running theme tonight of safety. And Dr. Shirk had mentioned, uh, an invisible backpack. Want to discuss a little bit, if I may, uh, visible backpacks. This issue came up recently, um, where, uh, a change was made at the high school that I initially had concerns with, uh, that the students are allowed to now carry backpacks. Uh, the more I looked into it, I found out the decision was made, I'm paraphrasing, this is my understanding, uh, because they, it was never changed that they couldn't carry backpacks to school. Well, to me, that's where, in regards to safety, that's where the issue is. Uh, I would request, um, that this be reviewed with local law enforcement, the idea of high school students being allowed to carry, not invisible, but backpacks that can't be seen through, uh, to school. What is the answer? I don't know. But, uh, unfortunately, we live in a day and age that we need to be proactive, not reactive. This is an area we don't want to react to. We don't want to be one of those schools. We want to do, I believe, all that we can to assure our students and our staff and visitors' safety at all times. Whether that means, uh, students aren't allowed to carry backpacks, whether that means they can, but the, the backpacks will be searched, uh, whether it means they can, but it's clear backpacks, whether it's, uh, any of the above, I, I, I don't know. But I think, I think it's something that, um, should be discussed. Uh, we should look at the national standards, uh, recommendations, uh, in this regard, uh, as well as talk to, uh, the local chiefs, uh, and get their opinions in regards to not carrying backpacks during the day, but carrying backpacks to school. Of course, if you can't carry it to school, you can't carry it during the day. I get that. But my concern isn't during the school day, it's the backpack getting into the building without being checked. Any other thoughts on that? Any objections to that discussion happening?
Well, uh, no, I mean, I, and I did send a, it escapes me. I know I have it somewhere here. I did send the correspondence out to the whole board regarding that, that piece. And as you know, um, it was something, and Dr. Ziger, you correct me if I'm wrong after I'm finished, but, um, it was something that was a, again, it was a bottom-up thing with the students. Uh, they were allowed to carry, as you've mentioned, backpacks into the building. Uh, they just weren't allowed to carry them from class to class. Uh, it was vetted out through, through our local chiefs. I know, and that was one of the things that I, I spoke to Dr. Ziger when this, when this, when he approached me about it. I said, we need to make sure that we take a look at what, um, our local chief, our, our local authorities think, number one, what are trends across, across the country, um, and, uh, making sure that, um, we, uh, we adhere to those pieces. And what, what also, what are, what are local, other local school districts, you know, how are they weighing in on this too? The, the, the clear backpack, I, I did ask some of the administrators who were here, and I think Mrs. Custer, you've been helping with this. There was a day when we had clear backpacks
At the middle school.
at the middle school. And, and there was a, there was a concern there about the, you know, the quality and, and they broke a lot easier. They weren't as construct as well. So, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm, um, what I'm trying to, to, to see is how much more vetted like you want it to be. Because I felt, I'm, I'm, I felt we did a pretty good job of vetting it out through the right channels.
Well.
Unless you're saying that, unless, 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 you know, unless we, we, we start over, which, which we could.
If I can, this wasn't. The issue I'm discussing was not vetted. Cause when I heard this was vetted, I thought, huh? Chief Foltz, my understanding is, said yes, backpacks are allowed to come into the building, so no reason why they can't be carried during the school day. I agree with that. My concern is the backpacks coming into the building. That's where my concern is. That specific issue, uh, was not vetted, at least through the, through Chief Foltz. So that's the area. And, and I'm not against bottom up in certain areas. When it comes to safety, I believe we need to be, well, it needs to go both ways because bottom up can give us some good thoughts too, but we need to be top down. We need to be on top of this at the various top levels, at our level, at your level, and so forth and so, so on. That, making sure that we're doing all we can to make sure our students are as safe as humanly possible.
I try to avoid words like all, every, and never. Okay? Do all we can? Do you really mean that? I don't, and I don't agree to that. Okay? We're not going to do all we can. We're going to balance our obligation with a reasonable threat with common sense. We have to balance those things. That's why we're here. That's what we do. And I agree, they vetted from the school in. Maybe they haven't vetted getting into the school. The immediate problem I have with that is then, what about a purse? Is a purse a backpack? What's the difference? Because one's carried, you know, on one shoulder and the other, the strap is wider or derrover, so no purses? I, I, I think there's a lot of difficulty with that and I'm not sure about the relative threat that it presents for us right now. It, there is a, a non-zero threat, absolutely. But is it warranted to get rid of all of the, the, the backpacks? I think the first step ought to be, ask the students and ask them if it's a problem. If they say it's no problem, then we're done. We go no further. We can change the policy that easily. But I, I'm, I'm going to stop there and just say, ask, ask anybody else what they would, they would think or say.
I also did express concern about this. I don't take it as, quite as far as Bill does, um, with the, you know, cannot bring a backpack at all to school. Or it has to be clear or, or see-through. Because I do understand that, you know, kids need to carry stuff to school. And especially females often have things that they want to carry and they don't want everyone to see what they're carrying. But I did question right away, um, I felt it was a step backwards to allow students to carry backpacks in the hallways. And, and, um, I understand the need. I, I do understand that, that sometimes it's difficult to get to your locker. Sometimes it's nice to be able to carry all of your books at once. But I also question, you know, we, we are a school that prides itself on, you know, the Apple awards that we win and the, the computers that every student is, is toting around with them. So why so many trips to the lockers? They've, I mean, really, the way that we're moving, it's. They've, I mean, really, the way that we're moving, it's, at least it is being presented to us that we are becoming a very digital school. So if them carrying backpacks all day is going to reduce trips to lockers and reduce congestion in the hallway, that's great, but they shouldn't be going to their lockers as much, because they should have pretty much everything they need right here. And I also question the, the hallway congestion, because the same amount of kids are in the hallway. Okay, maybe they're not stopping at their lockers as often, but you add those kids in the hallway, then each kid has a backpack on their back? As far as I'm concerned, you just made a crowded hallway more crowded. And I think that too raises safety concerns. I've heard, I've had two kids that went through this school, uh, I've heard the stories. You know, there's the certain people you know to stay away from, because you accidentally bump into them and you're going to get a, an earful because you did that. Um, so if someone gets whacked in the head with somebody else's backpack, you know, I don't know. I, I, I'm just not a fan of the idea. I don't like the thought of making it easier for anybody throughout the day to possibly harm somebody else regardless. And I understand if they're bringing it into the school, it's already in the school, but guess what? If it's in their locker, it might make them think twice. You know, if, if there's a, a kid unfortunately that's on the edge and is thinking about harming other students, and he or she has easy access to that weapon that they brought, he brought, he or she brought into school that day, because it's in their backpack, they don't have to go to their locker for it, I just think that's, just think it's making it too easy for them. I just don't understand. I feel we've taken a step backwards.
I'm going to ask our two fellow student representatives. You guys have been here for the last couple of weeks. Obviously, security not withstanding, because it's completely a different thing, but I'm curious as to how you've felt the new procedure has worked in the school.
I mean, the kids seem happier about it. Like, everybody that I know carries around their backpack all the time and they like it better, they don't have to, especially since the laptops are bigger and stuff, it's easier to carry it around and everything. I mean, I don't carry around my book bag most of the time. I just don't see the point in it, but I don't really have that many books to carry around in the first place. But for kids that carry around, that have to carry around textbooks to each class and stuff, I can understand why it might be easier. And it definitely, like the congestion thing, it's really only certain spots of the school that get congested sometimes. So that was never, to me, that was never really that big of a problem either way. It's just those parts, everybody goes there at certain times, like around the lunchroom and certain stairwells and everything. So that can't be avoided with or without backpacks. And, um, with like, it does, to certain classes, it makes it easier to have all your stuff in a backpack, because, um, stopping at your locker does make you late to class sometimes. And teachers are, like, if you could say like, oh, I need to go to my locker or something, and you're like 30 seconds late, like, they're not going to yell at you for it, but you're still walking into class late, and they might have already started talking and, or taking attendance that fast, or whatever the case is. So to me, to, to me, it seems like it's helped the kids than, more than harmed, I guess.
I think that we definitely understand the safety issue. That was at least one of my first thoughts. Uh, but it really is so convenient. Like, I have five of my classes in the morning, and I do have binders for all of them. I take notes in every class. I don't do all of my work on my computer. Teachers don't assign all of the work on the computers. So not having to run up and down the stairs between every class is, is really convenient. And I think a lot of students feel the same way. It's, it's just easier to have everything with you than trying to, you know, manage being late and when you can go to your locker and what you need to bring to each class. It's, it's definitely more convenient this way.
Question. From your experience bef, the prior policy, and you said how some teachers wouldn't understand you were late, you had to run to your locker, how much less disruptive is the teacher having to, when starting the class now with the new policy versus prior to the policy?
Um, I mean, I haven't really seen a difference much yet, but, um, every, in every single one of my classes, everybody's been on time for class, so, yeah.
No, I, no, I appreciate, I appreciate all your thoughts, and, um, and I think, you know, um, I, I, I will share this with the board, because I think, I, my hope is you know this, if you don't, I, then I, I've really missed the mark, but, you know, we, school safety and student safety is paramount around here. You know, we, 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 we didn't just, we didn't do the active shooter style. We, we did it ahead, we were a year ahead of everybody else, because we had the foresight to just be prepared. So when, you know, the Florida incident came about in February, we were ready. We had answers to the questions already, and we were already, our, our, our school was in a practice mode already. So, so we're going to continue to work. I, well, my takeaway tonight from this is that, that I think what we're going to do is we're going to reconvene, um, with our high school and middle school principal, along with our local police authority, and just reconvene that backpack piece and try to find, look at some national data with school safety. Those, that information's out there. We, we, we can, we can draw some conclusions or bring some information back to the board on those particular topics and say, yeah, we're, 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 yes, we're hitting, hitting the mark, or no, we're not hitting the mark, or, or this is what we need to do. So I think there, there's, there's places for us to work and report back to the, to the board, uh, moving forward.
Yeah, I do. I have a couple of things. Two are secretarial. Uh, the first is, um, to revisit the, the voting, the PSBA voting, um, that I brought up at the last meeting. I did try to send you guys the links, and they weren't coming through, and they, you needed special passwords and stuff to get in. So we discussed this last night at the JOC meeting, because it's, it's like one vote per entity. So the JOC needed, you know, they were presented with the opportunity to vote, just like we are. Um, the JOC pretty much decided to abstain, because they don't, nobody knows these people that we're voting for. Quite a few of the positions were, you know, voting for two people, and there's two positions, so it's sort of a no-brainer. Um, but some of them are voting for two people, and there's, or three peo, voting, let me rephrase that. Right. Three people running for two positions. So then we'd have to make a choice. Well, how can we make that choice? We don't know these people. And even if you read their bio, it still doesn't tell you, you don't know the person personally, you haven't met them. So, uh, I just wanted to ask if everyone is okay with us abstaining from the votes as an entity, as a board, because we're not aware of who these people are. And honestly, I don't even understand the positions they're running for. I, 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 I don't, like, here, I've got something in front of me right now where, uh, you, you need to vote for the Pupil Transportation Forum Steering Committee members. So do, does anybody object to me just entering votes, abstention votes?
No, actually, I a hundred percent agree with, with your recommendation.
Okay. Abstain. All right. Anybody else? We're all good? Okay. Then I will do that. Uh, also, I was, I believe just last week, I was sent information on the delegate assembly, uh, where these votes, I believe, will happen. Um, I, there, there was a form that came with it to register for it, and I accidentally left that at home. So if anybody is interested on going to the assembly, it is October 19th. It says from 1:00 to 3:30, but I'm reading in here that it's not. It says 1:30 to 2:30, or, and then 2:30 to 5:00. I, I don't know what that means and why it's different on the inside.
Actually, that, that's part, because I received one also, but that's part of the Pennsylvania State PSBA Conference. And so it runs from time to time, and basically for the, you have to pay in order to attend.
Right, right. And that's the form I left at home by accident.
Right. And also, um, if you just wanted to go to the assembly where they're doing some special voting and things like that, just to get in touch with it, that's free.
Right, right.
And that's what'll show you. I think that's Friday, at like 1:00 to 2:30. I think that's the one.
Okay. Anyway, if anybody's interested, I can scan and email the form, if anybody would be interested in going. I'll take that as a no.
Have we ever sent anybody to this thing? You going?
No, I went to the national. I've never been to the Pennsylvania, but I went to the national.
If nobody wants the information, I'm, I'll just, okay. Now, this is non-secretarial, so I just had one last thing. I just had a quick question. I was just wondering how the whole, how the libraries are doing with the new aid situation? Are they being covered? I did hear there was a few hiccups at the middle school the first couple of days. But is, are the libraries staying open? Are they being visited, all that stuff? I just wanted to double-check on that.
Mrs. Custer, I, I have, I have not heard anything specifically. I'd, like you mentioned, I know we had a, a couple of hiccups in the beginning with the elementary part-time persons because of where they were to go. I think there were some logistical pieces there. Uh, I hate to put my people on the spot, but is there anything that, that you could share with the board regarding the library's operational procedures? Lisa, thank you.
Yes. Ms. Bonkowski, who was previously the aide up at the middle school, she is now the aide at the, at West and at Rocks, and then also one half-day at Lower, so that our libraries, all of our libraries are able to stay open. When, um, the librarian is teaching at another school, then the aide is there to be able to continue to check in books and help students check out books.
It was really a nice night. We went out to see the, um, the marching band. They had their preview, and Bill Parker was there, and Chuck Dipper was there, and it was, it was a hot night. Oh my gosh, it was so hot. But it was so nice to see a lot of the sports team. All the football team was there, the cheerleaders were there to cheer them on, and they went through the, the, the whole, the whole show, and then they broke it down, how they got there, and the kids were so proud. It was so nice. And you can really see they call him, Mr. C. is doing a phenomenal job and is really connected with the kids. So that was a really nice night. And then that brought on, um, a question I had for Mr. C., is I said, is there anywhere that is posted of the cavalcades that they attend? So we can, if we're available, we can go support them. And, um, they printed them out for me, but I didn't know if we could get this on our website somehow, of just, I don't know, it would be the co-curriculum, you know, or some link that we could put them on there and just, just support them. But they did a phenomenal job, didn't they? They really did. They really did. Anything else you wanted to say about it?
You know, I, I had a thought that night, and I forgot it till now. Sitting there watching them and the, the discipline that it takes, the self-discipline that, that's taught, how they have to memor, they don't have, I grew up playing the violin in school, I had the music right there. There was no memorizing. That was hard enough to do. They have to learn how to play it, they have to memorize it, they have to memorize the steps, going backwards, sideways, this way, that way, drilling this, going over there. Uh, it, it's amazing. And, you know, we've talked about other areas, you know, non-academic, and how it affects positively academics. I think this right here is an example of something that really, really helps students learn so much with the self-discipline, self-motivation that's, that they're, that they have to learn.
It was an amazing experience. My kids were in the band, and I was in the drill team at Lehigh. But, uh, it was an amazing experience, because he would say, there were, they hadn't had the whole drills team yet, the whole routine yet. He said, there's 33 pages of drill, and it's different for each one of the kids going through, and you have to hit the mark. And having been on a drill team, you got to guide yourself by the, the gridlines on the football field, because, you know, if I try and orient myself to the stands, next week I'm going to be in a different set of stands. So, uh, you've, you've got to know where you are literally, and if you're out of place, you know, it's, it's very conspicuous. So they did a beautiful job. And, uh, you know, they've got to do, they've got to do this. It's kind of like Fred Astaire and Ginger Rogers. They've got to do two things at once. They've got to play, and they've got to know where they're, hit their marks consistently. And so it was really good.
One last thing. I attended the football, um, meeting, and, um, I thought this was great to share with everybody, but they're going to be selling garden flags. So these are the little garden flags, and one says, Pots Grove Pride, and the other one says, Go Falcons, Pots Grove Football. But it's a fundraiser for them, and it's a 12 by 18, and they're actually online, you can go to potsgrovefootball.com from September 4th to the 28th, but I just thought this was really, really a nice idea. Yes?
I'm going to ask, you know, I, I, I guess my better judgment, I'm going to ask, does anybody else have anything else? All right. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we have two more. Second. Okay, we have one second. All the papers, single vote, we're saying, all right? Time now.[1752.13]